This is a regular meeting of the Cameron County Commissioners Court. Tuesday, the first day of May 2007. As we do all meetings, we will start with an invocation followed by the pledges of allegiance. And today, we have Tomas Caruba, pastor of the Hosanna Assembly. Tomas?
............................................................ Thank you. Commissioner, I hope he continues his progress. I would like to ask Estella to lead us in the pledges. Pledge of Allegiance to the US flag and the Texas flag. You can do it from there if you'd like, Estella. All right?
................................. Thank you.
Item one, public comments. Item two. Presentation and adoption of a resolution honoring Mrs. Estela F. Farias on the occasion of her retirement from Cameron County. Estella, would you like to come up?
....................................................................................... But I don't like to read all the resolutions because I know people are pressed for time. But this one, I'd like to read all of it. Okay? If you don't mind. Be it resolved that on the first day of May 2007, the Cameron County Commissioners Court convened in regular session upon the request of Cameron County Auditor Mark Yates, the following item was placed on the agenda of the said court after such meeting. Consideration and adoption of resolution honoring Mrs. Estela F. Farias on the occasion of her retirement from Cameron County. Whereas on April 30th, 2007, Mrs. Estela F. Farias retired from the Cameron County Auditor's Department after 28 years of dedicated and faithful service to Cameron County. And during her long and fruitful tenure with Cameron County, Miss Farias has won respect and admiration for her courteous and helpful manner. And whereas Miss Farias dedicated the past 28 years a truly dedicated public servant and has faithfully served under County Auditor Rudy LaRosa, Rayburn McNally, Mark Yates, and purchasing agents Kenneth Lee, Leo Bueno, and Mike Forbes. And whereas Miss Farias's time as a county employee has been marked by a number of special achievements, including her work to end in the purchasing department in Cameron County, where she has always strived to ensure that responsible bidders are given a fair opportunity to compete for the county's business and the best value received for the public's dollars. And whereas Miss Farias is well-regarded by colleagues, friends, and family alike for her strong commitment to helping others and her dedication to charitable causes. And whereas the Cameron County Commission Court would like to join the County Auditor Mark Yates and the rest of the community in wishing Miss Farias well in her retirement. It also offers a sincerest gratitude for the many years of service she has provided to citizens of this county. Therefore, be it resolved, the County Commissioners Court hereby honors Mrs. Estela Farias on the occasion of her retirement after 28 years of service to Cameron County.
And she's going to say many words, but I will tell you that I think I meant something to your family. Your sister? Your sister? You want to point who your family is out? Stand up, members that want to claim they're related. Does Estella want to stand up? There you go.
My son, his girlfriend, my niece, and my sister.
There you go. Aside from Cameron County thanking you for all your work, I want to thank your family for sharing her with us for 28 years. And without the support of your family, this would not be possible. So thank you to you all for supporting her all this time. Now, it's yours. Over here.
Well, I'm not very good at this, but thanks to everybody. It was a pleasure. Thank you.
At this time, if any member of the court would like to say a few words for Estella, you can do so. We'll start off with Commissioner Precinct One, Sophie Benavides.
Estella, I think you came in probably a little bit after I left. But I know that you helped my husband while he was here, and I know you've been helpful to me. I wish you the best. I really think you're too young to retire, but I do hope that you enjoy it. Good luck to you.
Obviously, I believe what makes the county work are the people that work for the county and work in the county and works with the county. And you've done a marvelous job for 28 years, and you are going to be missed. You really are. But don't be a stranger. Come back around and visit. We're glad to see you. Congratulations.
No, you go ahead.
It's been a pleasure, Estella, since I came on the commission. It's always been a smiling face and a helpful hand whenever I've needed anything in that office. I think that your retirement now and others that I've been able to witness in the last few years that I've been here attest to the fact that the county provides some good benefits for our employees. And you can retire. You can retire young. You can enjoy your life. I think says a whole lot. The fact that you started working, you must have started when you were 10 because you can't be that old, okay? But I just want to congratulate you for taking the step. I know it's difficult to do, but taking the step to doing what you want to do from now on. And you're going to be missed, but enjoy. Thank you.
Well, Estella, I heard compliments about you. And then, on a personal basis, before I became Commissioner, the things that I heard about you, you were poised, you were polite, all the things that we like to hear about our employees. And then, as Commissioner, I got to know even more about you. So I admire you. And who knows? Maybe after a year or two, or maybe three, people do come back after they retire. And I'm a living testament of that. But I wish you the best of luck. Enjoy your family. Enjoy each and every day. And thank you for your service.
Well, this is not the Estela Farias roast, but would anybody else like to say anything? Mark?
Yes.
Would you like to...
She's still crying.
...say something about Estella? Or anybody else? Take the microphone now while you can. Mark?
Well, I didn't want to upstage what you had just said because I couldn't have said it any better. I've been with County Auditor's Office 14 years, and that's half the time in which Estella had served the county. And all the assignments that were undertaken by Estela Farias were done with proficiency and reliability. If I had a task that needed to be done in that area, I knew I could count on her to get it done and get it done thoroughly. And so, I found her work ethic and her work product very professional. She will be very missed, but she always has a home in my office. And I'm going to miss her very much.
Well said, Mark. Thank you. Anybody else like to say anything? All right. Estella, thank you. Godspeed to you. Item three, presentation by the Jail Overcrowding Issues Committee. Luis?
Okay. Go ahead. Commissioners, the Jail Overcrowding Committee that y'all appointed back in April met twice, had two meetings. The last one we had was on April 26th. I do want to say that the turnout was very, very excellent. It was very encouraging to see the department heads that were invited, the district clerk attended, Joe Rivera, County Clerk, attended, the DA's office attended, Sheriff Lucy was present at the second meeting, Richard Santiana from probation was present. So we had a very good turnout. Everybody understood what the issue was. I presented the issue on two levels. Number one, that it impacted us as participants in the criminal justice system on the one level. And on the second level, and most importantly, it impacted us and everybody else as taxpayers because the situation being that any time we have an individual in jail that is there because his case is not moving or because he shouldn't be there, the taxpayers are picking up the money to have him there. And that's the way that we approached it. We looked at it in two different components. I looked at it in what can we do short term, immediately, to alleviate the overcrowding? And what can we do long term? In the short term, we came up with some good answers that is really nothing new, but by bringing them up to the forefront and talking about them, it brought more of a public awareness and an awareness as to what we're doing and why we need to do this. And basically, that entailed action by the Brownsville City Municipal Judges and the Cameron County Magistrate Judges. And that was in going over our files, going over our past arraignments, and looking at individuals that perhaps we could give a PR bond to, a personal recogitation bond, meaning get them out of jail on their signature only. And of course, that was premised on the fact that no violent offenders were going to be let go, that if anybody was going to be let go, it was going to be the misdemeanor, high school student, no criminal history, an individual that would not present a threat to the community, and that we felt sure would appear in court. So doing that, we were able to get out of jail some of the people that didn't belong in jail, again, Class B misdemeanors. And I think that it worked so well that we are going to continue the implementation of this particular component. The Sheriff's Office was very cordial in allowing Brownsville and the magistrates and the pre-trial office access to their computer. Access to their computers so that we ourselves could generate our own list. And I call them the days in jail list. Those are what gets everything started. So from now on, the municipal courts are going to download from the Sheriff's Office with permission a weekly list telling them those individuals that have now been in jail for more than 10 days and have not made bond. So that once again, we will try and get those individuals out by giving them PR bonds, again, with the caveat that I just told you about non-violent offenders and violent offenders staying in. So that's what the Brownsville Municipal Judges were glad to do. And I want to say again that their cooperation was excellent. Judge Decausse, Judge Williams, Judge Torreya, everybody was willing to help, and they're still willing to help. They recognize the problem that we're in, and they're willing to help Cameron County. So we're very pleased with that participation by the municipal judges and the magistrates. On the second level, the DA's office took it upon themselves to fast-track what we call jail cases. In other words, these are the cases of the individuals that, again, did not make bond. And by fast-tracking, that is basically picking up the phone and trying to get these files in, these cases in, so they can be processed. So because they're not making bond, we can get them into court easier or quicker and get the case disposed that way and get them out of jail. So those lists are going to be made available now to us, and the DA's office is also going to be helping us with that. The Sheriff's Office is going to be doing the following, and it's very simple, but I think it brings the point across. They're going to have a very big poster right there where, I don't know if y'all have ever been to the jail, and if you haven't, I'd like to invite you there so you can see what happens in the trenches, as I say. Every day, people coming in and people going out. But what they're going to be doing is very simple, but I think it'll bring the point home. Because this is the kind of situation that we've learned that you've got to stay on top of. I mean, you've got to do this every day, every week, every month, every year. It's not the kind of thing that we can put a Band-Aid on, walk away, and pretend that it's going to get done. We've got to stay on top of this thing. So they're going to be putting a poster there where the booking officers, the arresting officers come in and basically tell them, "Mr. Arresting Officer, please timely turn your cases into the DA's office because if you don't, at some point, this individual's going to be costing the county money because he's incarcerated and his case is not moving." Okay? Hoping to just build a fire under them to get going on these cases. One of the things that we found out, or that I found out in this endeavor here, was that we have a pre-trial office that I believe we're not using as much as we need to be using. We're underutilizing our pre-trial office. Our pre-trial office is very important because, as you know, an individual, in order to make bond, has two options on getting out of jail. Number one, by posting the full amount of the bond. If it's a $2,000 bond, he posts that amount, he gets out of jail. The second option is by hiring a bail bond company. The bail bond company will charge you 10%. Well, some folks cannot come up with the 10%. And that's where the pre-trial office comes in. The pre-trial office is your office, it's the county office, statutorily created, and that pre-trial is just like a bail bond company. In fact, it's a Cameron County bail bond company. And what it does is interviews defendants, clients, and if they qualify by the criteria given by the state, then they will be able to qualify for a bond at not 10%, but 4% or even 3% or even 2%. Which, again, if an individual can't pay 10%, there's a very, very good chance that he can pay 4% or 3% and get out. The pre-trial office is, I was very, very impressed with their numbers as far as people that they bonded out. I don't have the numbers with me, but on one occasion, they bonded out about 1,000 people in one year, and out of those 1,000, only 27 failed to appear, which is a very, very, very good record. It's better than some of the bail bond companies that are out there. The political history on the pre-trial office, I came to learn, was that the previous administration, to be in good with the bail bond companies, practically banished the pre-trial office from the Sheriff's Office, from the jails. Said, "We don't want you guys coming here because you're taking bonds away from the bail bond companies, and these are my friends," or whatever. My response to that is that both have a role to play. I know the bail bond companies, for whatever reason, don't have good reputations, but folks, they've got a role to play. And their role is to get people out of jail on 10% if they can. If they cannot, then we get our own pre-trial office to look at them and try and get them out on a 4% and 3%. I believe that the pre-trial office can grow and can expand to allow them to get even more people out. I've discussed that with the county judge, and he's asked me to look into other pre-trial offices and how they're working and see if we can expand that a little bit more by getting in more pre-trial offices or even a clerk. Right now, they don't have anybody that work out of Richard Santiana's office, and he's done a good job in taking them in. But I think that if they were to work independent, they might be able to even, I don't say double their efforts, but get more people out on bond through the county. The other things that we came up with, Judge Murray, who's a retired district judge, will now be helping every week on Fridays. He's going to be going down to Cali Silas and using magistrate courtroom to take care of people that want to plead right there and then. Along that line, Angela Nix has now clarified that Angela Nix is the public defender, and she's also working. She's also going to be given access to the Sheriff's Office so she can download her own list. And what she's doing now is on Friday or Saturday, she'll go down to the jail and interview people and get them ready for pleas on Monday. This last Saturday, she was there. She advised me. She got 30 people signed up to bring them into court the following week. Having said that, you would think that we are clearing this thing out. It's very discouraging. I've been working very closely with Lieutenant Trevino and Lieutenant Garcia from the Cameron County Sheriff's Office, and they've been very accessible. Anything that I ask, anything that I want, they provide to me so I can do what you've instructed me to do. She called me, I want to say about 10 days ago, and she was very excited in the morning. Said, "Judge, we got 45 people out this morning." I said, "Great, great. It's working." She called me that afternoon and said, "Judge, 47 came in." So it's like, it's very difficult. It's very difficult. Again, it's the kind of situation that has to be monitored. So these short-term solutions are not the answer, okay? The answer that I believe, or one of the answers that I believe, and I've discussed this with the committee, is number one, a system whereby the DA has what is called a direct filing. Okay? A direct filing basically is, number one, is the DA's office has an assistant DA on call 24 hours a day. 24 hours a day. An arrest is not made in the field until that arresting officer communicates directly right there and then with the assistant DA and tells the assistant DA what they've got on their hands. And the assistant DA will authorize or not authorize the arrest. If they authorize the arrest, then the job of that arresting officer is to report to the assistant DA's very next morning and bring them the file. Bring them the entire file so that they can file it the very next day. And therefore, we cut down the timeframe that we're working with right now, which is days and even weeks and even months. I think that's the ultimate answer on getting the jail not to be as overcrowded as is right now. Obviously, it comes down to money. The first assistant, administrative assistant, David Gonzalez, traveled to Austin about two weeks ago at the request of Governor Perry because he had some seed money for grants available. Well, lo and behold, everybody showed up, so there was not going to be enough money to go around. But that's what they're doing right now. I've requested that they look to grant money, to seed money, anywhere else that they can to implement that direct filing system. If those efforts fail, then obviously, they may have to come back to the Commissioners Court to see how that gets funded. But I think that's going to be the ultimate answer in cutting down people sitting in jail because the files are not being turned in. All right? The other situations, and I discussed it with the judge too, and these have to do with what we call the blue warrant and the paper-ready inmates. This is where I believe the state has taken advantage of us. Paper-ready inmate is basically the following. This is where an individual has been sentenced to the penitentiary, and the district judge has provided the judgment, the DA's office has provided statements of fact, the sheriff's office has provided their documentation, he's ready to go. Okay? The state gives themselves 45 days to come pick him up. So what they're doing is, we're telling them, "We've got 95 people paper-ready." They'll come in on the 44th day and take three, four, maybe five. So for 44 days, Cameron County has been paying for that literally state inmate. I don't think that's fair, and I don't think that's right. I think that needs to be changed. And we're talking about legislative changes. So I think the county, and I don't know whose job that would be, but the county needs to talk to the legislators and try and get that streamlined so that that does not occur. Okay? So we don't hold those inmates at our expense simply because they don't come pick them up. And when they come pick them up, they only say, "We have room for 10," and they leave the other 80 behind. On any given day, as a matter of fact, right now, we've got 91 that are paper-ready, meaning we're done. Everybody's done their job, they're ready, the state just won't pick them up. So calculate that, and you're talking literally thousands of dollars right away. The other component on that is the blue warrant. The blue warrant is an individual who's on parole. He's on parole, and he commits a subsequent offense, or he fails to report, or he tests dirty, something happens that he violates his conditions of parole. The state issues what is called a blue warrant, and it's literally blue, so it's a blue warrant, placing the defendant in jail. He will stay in jail until the case that got him arrested runs its course. A lot of times, the case that got him arrested is a Class B misdemeanor for possession, maybe criminal trespass, maybe a small theft, which is going to be a misdemeanor. But the state won't do anything with their part of it, in other words, with their revocation, until the case runs its course. Well, that's going to take two, four, six weeks. So once again, for two, four, six weeks, we've got a state inmate in your county jail, and guess who's picking up the tab? I think that has to change. But again, it's going to take legislative answers, a legislative process to change that, to streamline that, to have the situation whereby if we're going to hold your inmates, then you're going to have to pay us. Because it's not fair that the citizens of Cameron County are picking up the tab for a state prisoner. I know they're not going to like that, but maybe if they don't like it, they'll hurry up and pick them up.
Luis, on that issue alone, can you get with Pete in the next day or so and help them maybe draft some kind of a memorandum to our state senator and our state reps?
Certainly.
And see if they can... I know it may be late to introduce something now...
Well, it may be late, but we can get it started next time.
Exactly. Because they're, you know, can you do that, Pete?
Are there any provisions for the county to bill the state for holding their inmates?
Right now, I don't think there is. But that doesn't mean we can't come up with any.
So if we bill them, all they can do is say they're not going to pay, or...
Right now, I don't think there is, and if we bill them, they're probably not going to pay. But at least we set up ourselves for the, you know, point the problem, pinpoint the problem, say, "This is a problem."
They're following the legislation as it's written.
Correct.
So if it were, you could bill them if they were taking 60 days to pick up, and you could bill them those extra 15 days. But if they're picking them up on the 44th day, then, I mean, they're following the rules...
Right. If they're only picking up nine out of 40 that's ready...
Correct, correct. Even when they come in, they won't take them all.
Yeah, but it's the most aged ones, okay?
I know.
So that they still stay within that 45-day compliance of...
Right. Exactly.
So when you said that they would take 10 and leave X number behind...
Those X numbers still have...
44 days weren't up. So they're using...
They're using us.
They're using us.
Exactly. That's my point.
Bottom line. And so is the state.
Absolutely.
Well, Pete, do get with him.
Well, let's bill them, and then when the bill becomes delinquent, we won't have to do business with them anymore. And when they have unfunded mandates, we can tell them we're not doing business with them. I don't know.
Out of curiosity, Luis, how many blue warrant inmates do we have?
Uh, okay. Blue warrant inmates right now, we have about 60.
60?
Correct.
Is that pretty much what we average?
Uh, pretty much. But if you add those to the paper-ready, you're talking about 150. And that's 150 bets, that's 150 bets that the sheriff could otherwise use for other individuals.
I missed something. On the state prisoners, state inmates, did you say they have a timeline when...
The paper-ready inmates have a 45-day timeline. The blue warrants don't have any timeline.
They don't have a...
The blue warrants, they'll say, "He's going to stay in jail until the case that he got arrested for runs its course, and then we're going to decide what to do with him." And my point is, well, I mean, that's great for you guys, but in the meantime, we're left holding the bag here. And a lot of times, the underlying case that he got arrested from, you know, for violating his parole, it's a misdemeanor. But he sits in jail for, you know, four or five weeks as that misdemeanor case goes through, again, on our nickel. And I don't think that's fair to the citizens of Cameron County, that we should be paying for that. I think Commissioner Wood has a good idea. Let's just bill them. Say, "Hey, you owe us this much. I mean, you bill us, and we owe you." I mean, you know, tables are turned. I think it's fair. I think it would get their attention and at least, you know, get it ready for when we come in with the legislative changes. And that's why we're doing this, because we can't afford to pay for your prisoners.
If we get to a point where we have to start sending inmates, our inmates, out someplace else, we're going to get billed for it, and we're going to have to pay for it. It's the same thing with...
Well, that's going to be very problematic because then you're talking about, I mean, you ship them out, now you've got to ship them back and bring them to court. And you talk about expenses for security and transportation, and it just doesn't work. So again, the ultimate answer on overcrowding is going to be the direct filing by the DA's office. And I think we all need to encourage them to pursue that. I know in the beginning, Mr. Villalobos was very excited about that, but when he was kind of beating the drum for that, nobody picked up on it, and he kind of just perhaps dropped it. But I think this is the time to pick it up again and run with it. Cameron County's become of age. I mean, we just have a lot of people and a lot of crime. The direct filing system is a system used by Harris County and El Paso, by the bigger communities, and that gets the cases moving. The cases are moving once they get to court, but the problem is getting the paperwork to the DA's office. And again, the violators here, I know the Valley Morning Stars here is the Harlingen Department, Harlingen Police Department, are very bad about getting their cases in.
I was going to ask about the Harlingen Police Department. Are they working with us jointly, as you said, the Brownsville Police Department was, the magistrates, to do PR bonds and this type of thing?
The judges are, yes, sir, the judges are. The two- the two municipal judges, uh, did work along with us on trying to get those PR. But I'm talking about the detectives, the- the- the people doing the investigations. Their cases aren't being turned in. And I'm not just going to highlight Harlingen, there's other communities that, uh, you know, do the same thing. One of the problems here is just inherent on a police officer. A police officer has a gun and wears, you know, handcuffs, and he puts people in jail. His mentality is, "I put this guy in jail, I'm done."
And I'm through.
Okay? He needs to learn that this is just step one. You've got to get this filed into the DA's office so this case can keep going. But you try telling that to a police officer, and it- it doesn't- it doesn't register, because that's-
Well, but those police officers have supervisors.
Absolutely.
And you have to look at where the accountability ends.
Absolutely. Yes.
Is there any way to deal with blue warrants, just as, you know, I- I see what we can do with direct filing, I see what we can do with paper-ready, and where we apply pressure, you know, to hopefully move that. But on the blue warrant aspect-
Go ahead.
Well, just, uh, good evening, Judge Commissioners. Uh, on the blue warrants, through the Sheriff's Association, there's a bill right now pending in the legislature. It's not moving as quickly as we would like to, and that means somebody committed a misdemeanor, that he goes before the judge, and the judge can set a bond on him, and perhaps we can release him. And for your information, there's about five hundred people that are wanted on blue warrants here in Cameron County alone. So that is a problem that we have with the blue warrants. They're sent to jail for the simple reason that they failed to report to the parole officer. Many times, they failed to report to the parole officer for the simple reason that perhaps their- their job played out on them. They lose their job, and they're afraid to go report that they don't have a job, because they feel that once they report that to the parole officer, that he's going to be incarcerated. So instead of reporting that and trying to get a reprieve, they stay out for two, three weeks, and when they do report, they say, "Well, you failed to report, so we're going to pick them up." They called us. Our job's to pick them up because there's a warrant, and we picked them up. We have tried to work very, very closely with the parole board, but it's- it's kind of hard sometimes to say no, okay? Because it's our job to go ahead and pick them up when there's a warrant on those. So there's a bill pending right now that we're pushing very hard. And I'm talking about the sheriffs, through the Sheriff's Association, okay? As far as that goes. As far as billing the people after they've been there for forty-five days, yes, we have. When I took off in nineteen ninety-seven and started doing that, and they're here more than forty-five days, we keep track of them, and we bill them, and they do send a check to the Auditor's Office or to the Treasury Department.
How long do they take?
I'm sorry?
How long do they take? Forty-five days?
Well, sometimes, you mean to pay?
Yeah, to- to get reimbursed.
I couldn't tell you that, Commissioner. I- I don't know, but I do know that they- they do pay. They might take maybe two, three months, as far as that goes, and then they send the check. But they do pay on the people that we showed that had been there more than forty-five days.
But- but they're very good about preventing that, because they'll come in on the forty-fourth or forty-fortieth.
Yeah, they're- they're using the system, that's what they're doing.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Uh, anybody have any questions? I don't know if I've given you enough information. Uh, it's a continuing problem. It's, like I said, it's not going to be resolved today. Uh, I do want to thank all the committee members that did participate. I think everything was very positive. And I think we've got, you know, something going, but it's got to be something that somebody has to continue to monitor on a weekly and monthly basis. I do want to thank the Sheriff's Office, they're very cordial in giving me everything I needed. As I indicated, Lieutenant Trevino and George Garcia are very good about providing me the information I needed to be able to bring it to you- to you, uh, this- this afternoon.
Please, I would- I would, uh, I would like to encourage your committee to continue meeting, you know, frequently.
All right.
Uh, you know, because I know that the sheriff has been very, very helpful to you. You know, Sheriff, when you- when you start anticipating that overcrowding or whatever, I mean, bring it to the committee's attention, I mean, aside from me and the commissioners, let them know. But I think if you continue to meet frequently and just, because it's, I'm afraid that if you stop meeting-
Right.
-we may go back to the old- the old habits.
Sure.
So, you know, I- I think you've done a great job as this- as Chairperson of that committee, and I encourage you to continue meeting frequently, maybe every two weeks, uh, until- until we really address this on a long-range basis, if you can, if you don't mind.
No, sir, I will do that.
Okay.
That's no problem.
Any other questions? Anybody?
I would just like to say that, you know, that you made a comment about forty-five being released in the morning and forty-seven coming in.
Right.
If those forty-five hadn't been released in the morning-
Would be overcrowded.
-it'd have been forty-seven more that day.
It would have been over our limit.
So, you know, tell those individuals that they do a good job, you know, it's just that you watch the news every night, and our sheriff is out there arresting more perpetrators that are committing crimes, you know? I mean, it seems like daily they have two or three individuals that are coming into the system.
And I think you hit it on the head, Commissioner. I mean, the fact that forty-seven came in means that law enforcement is out there doing their job. And we don't want to tell them, "Don't do your job." And that's not the answer. They've got to arrest people that have to be arrested. So, thank you.
Thank you, Luis. Anything further?
Thank you, Judge.
Uh, do I hear a motion to acknowledge, uh, Mr. Science's report moved by Commissioner Thamayo, seconded by Commissioner Gottfeld, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, item four, presentation by Terry Crocker, CEO Tropical Texas Behavioral Health, to provide brief agency overview update on new initiatives, new building, funding issues, and future challenges. Terry, welcome.
Thank you, Judge.
How are you?
It's a pleasure to be here. I have a PowerPoint presentation with me this evening. I can get things going here. Hopefully, that'll come up. It's a pleasure for me to be here, and I'm going to give some, uh, overview and update information on our agency. I know that many of you are well-versed in what we do and the people we treat, uh, so hopefully, there won't be too much redundancy for you, but I wanted to give you some updated information and data, uh, on what's going on with Tropical Texas Behavioral Health. Again, my name is Terry Crocker, I'm the Chief Executive Officer at Tropical Texas. Um, our leadership team is made up of five individuals. Uh, Dr. Ricardo Iadassadi, who's been part of your, uh, team that has been working on psychiatry recruitment here in the Cameron County area, Connie Aguirre, Kathy Cornell, and Holly Burrell. Again, just some background on our agency. We were established in, uh, nineteen sixty-seven. We are celebrating our fortieth year this year. We serve the Cameron, Hidalgo, and Willacy County catchment area. We were the first, and we are now the sixth-largest of thirty-eight other community centers across the state of Texas in terms of services provided. And we are designated by the state as the Mental Health Authority and the Mental Retardation Authority. We are a unit of local government, of course, sponsored by this court, the Willacy County Hospital District, and the Hidalgo County Commissioners' Court, and we have a nine-member Board of Trustees that are appointed by those courts. And we also have a planning and network advisory committee. Again, I'm sorry, let me back up for one second, please. Feel free to interrupt me as I go along. I've got about eighteen slides, I'm going to go quickly through some of them and spend a little bit more time on others. Of course, as you know, we provide outpatient mental health and mental retardation services to adults and children, and we are a big part of the safety net for South Texas in regards to mental health and mental retardation services. When something happens and there's nowhere else for anyone to turn, anywhere for people to turn, they will come to us for provision of services. Now, our eligibility criteria is fairly specific in terms of who we are treating that is, has no ability to pay, or who is indigent. And those would be people with bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, major depression, or major uh, mental retardation, and children ages three and older with mental illness or mental retardation.
I have a question on that-
Yes, ma'am.
-just from my own information.
Hmm?
Uh, what is the length of- of time? What is the timeline when- when you do the assessment? I mean, usually, how long does that assessment period take?
By law, we have the, uh, assessment done inside of fourteen days, and usually, it's more like five days, the last time, I average. We- we keep that data between our different clinics, but system-wide, the average is five to six days. Now, depending on what service may be indicated for that person based on the assessment, there may be a longer timeframe before that service gets going, depending on what their service needs are and what their level of acuity is in terms of their problem that they're working on. And some lists of- of services, again, you all have heard, our crisis hotline, continuity of care, jail diversion counseling, respite, home living, supported home livings, and rehab programs that we provide. This next slide is interesting, because it gives a glimpse of what's happening with our numbers across a couple of different fiscal years. The two thousand five and two thousand six are our fiscal years, and the, uh, row across the top are the service arrays. And as you see, the numbers in each of those service array have grown significantly from two thousand five to two thousand six. Overall, combined increase of about eighteen percent in just one year, and we're experiencing a similar increase since two thousand seven. FY two thousand seven is already looking very close to the same in terms of what we're experiencing with our, uh, inflow. For example, right now, in our children's area, we are serving a hundred and ninety-four percent of the number we are actually funded to serve by the state. We're almost doubling what we're funded to serve in our children's services. And there's a number at the top that's interesting, uh, number of unduplicated persons served in Cameron County in FY oh-six, five thousand two hundred and forty-one. That's an unduplicated count. Many of those people have received multiple services throughout the year, but that'll be an important number that we'll come to, come back to in just a little bit. This is a new piece of data, uh, that I received, uh, last time I was in Austin. This gives an interesting perspective of what's happening with our funding in the community mental health and mental retardation system across years. This is from FY two thousand three to FY two thousand six. And again, it's broken out between local, which are local support dollars, those also local dollars are generated that we would do through grants, contracts, and other things of that nature, state dollars, federal dollars, and then the total. And what's interesting, at the bottom, local dollars, what we've been able to bring into our agency has been going up, and that three-year period, it actually went up seventeen percent, while the state went down over twenty percent on what they're funding, they're providing for us. The federal level went up just a little bit, and overall, uh, we had a five-and-a-half percent decrease over those three years of services. And again, if you think back to the slide before, and just an eighteen percent increase in people being served and coming into our program on just a one-year basis, you begin to see the strain on the system there. Another thing that is of concern to me is that federal column. Uh, as there's discussion at a federal level about changes with Medicaid and, uh, changing what may be billable or non-billable for case management rehab services, if that number turns around and starts going in negative direction as well, uh, that will be of significant concern to us as we move forward. And then I've got some other data in terms of just what happened in fiscal year oh-six, how many services, huge amounts of services being provided, adults over fourteen-
You don't have, you don't have, like, page, well, page is not numbered.
I'm sorry?
But-
It's- it's the previous slide.
The previous slide.
Okay.
No, not that one, the next one.
The next one.
The next one back?
No. That- that one, but specific to the unit here.
No, I'm sorry, this is statewide. That's statewide, what's happening with the thirty-nine community centers across the state.
Be nice to see the one that's for the unit.
Yeah, I would have been interested in the county.
Your unit.
Sure, sure. And the- and the percentage differences are going to be-
Terry, off the top of your head, do you know what Tropical says?
In terms of percentage funding change across those three years?
Yeah, I mean, off the top of your head.
Well, it's going to be close to the same in the state level, because that was system-wide in terms of the eligibility criteria that changed with House Bill twenty-two ninety-two in oh-three. So those changes had a pretty similar effect statewide, so that percentage is going to be close to the same. I would say that, uh, the local is also pretty close for us, because we've been very successful in grants and partnering opportunities with other agencies, as well as, uh, well, the grants we've brought in, we've brought in significant dollars there. And I think we've actually done better on the federal level, because we've got more efficient and effective billing Medicaid and what we're billing in our whole, all billing system, our software automation system has greatly improved.
But can you convert those percentages to dollars for us?
I can, I don't- I don't, I wouldn't know them off the top.
Can you do that for us at some point in the future?
Absolutely, absolutely. Make a note of that. All right. Okay, um, and then moving ahead, just again, on the numbers of services, um, towards the bottom, an interesting thing that's always of significant concern to us, state hospital admissions. We have a state hospital allocation. Uh, that's not real money, but it basically means these are how many bed days Tropical has available to us in the state facility. And then anytime anyone is admitted from our catchment area, from Cameron, Hidalgo, and Willacy County into any state facility, it's counted against that allocation. And as we're under that allocation, we're okay. But as we go over, uh, there are other community MHMRs across the state that the state is forcing them to repay that overutilization, uh, sometimes to the tune of millions of dollars. So that's something we have to watch very, very closely.
So on these numbers that you're showing on this particular page-
Yes, ma'am.
Are you talking state or county?
This- this is our, this is for Tropical. These are our numbers.
For the unit, for the counties.
Right.
Okay.
For- for, right, our- our Willacy, Cameron, and Hidalgo counties. Just some, uh, some of the good things that have been going on as well in terms of expenses we've had are pharmacy assistance program savings. Just in the last fiscal year alone, we saved over one-and-a-half million dollars in utilizing that program. We spent almost three-point-two million dollars in FY oh-six, providing medications free-of-charge to individuals who did not have an ability to pay, and then secured an additional half-million dollars in medication free-of-charge to those consumers through sample- samples program. And some data on our mental retardation services as well. Just some brief comments on how we're doing. In our last fiscal year, we had eighteen external audits during that twelve-month period. All of them were passed. In my opinion, it reflects some growing confidence in our auditing and funding agencies. My first year on the job, we had thirty-nine different external audits, almost one every single week, uh, that I was on the job that first year. So we're- we're very pleased with that. We've had no significant findings of any type, vendor holds, sentinel events, immediate jeopardy, or those sorts of things. And in fact, we've- we've received a number of glowing, uh, outcomes, one of which is the federal probation contracts we have. Uh, they actually sent some of our staff to help train other contractors at a federal level in terms of how we were doing business with their contract. We're very proud of that- that organization. And of course, our community partners, we are continuing to increase the service providers in the community in which we try to partner with, to expand our services, to collaborate and make efficient and effective use of every dollar we have available to us. Uh, UT Pan Am, of course, the law enforcement agencies, FQHCs, and many, many others. Some financial impact data, our budget this year is almost twenty-five million dollars for our agency. Our sources, of course, local, state, and federal. We currently have three-hundred-and-sixty-three employees, we're budgeted for three-hundred-and-ninety-five full-time employees. And last fiscal year, we spent about twelve-and-a-half million dollars on employee salaries and Funding from counties, our total is eight-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, in which Cameron County provides two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand of that- that local funding. of that, that local funding. And if you remember those, that unduplicated count of 5214 people, unduplicated, I believe if you'll divide into that number, it works out to about $43 a person, pretty good return on investment for the citizens of Cameron County. And again, that's just looking at an unduplicated count, many, many of those people were receiving lots of services through, through the year. Our projected Medicare and Medicaid dollars that we'll earn this, this year, $6 million. And again, those are dollars that will be driven back into our services. FY '07 state and pass-through dollars that we'll draw down, almost $17 million. Of those dollars, $2 million that we'll contract out to other providers, that we'll contract with them, local providers, to provide services to our individuals, and we'll spend a little over $5.5 million on other client support expenses, such as emergency housing, emergency needs, those sorts of things. And just a few comment on some of our recent, recent initiatives. I mentioned that we had had a lot of success over the last three or four years on grants. We're very, very proud to be a partner with San Benito ISD and their Healthy Children's Safe Schools grant. That's a three-year grant worth over $5.5 million. We currently have two of our, what we call alphas, their licensed practitioner of the healing arts, licensed master's level people in, on their campuses, and another, five more throughout their district, working with the teachers and doing outreach services there. That's a fairly new program, we've already had over 100 students enrolled and receiving services there. We've added a full-time position for our jail diversion in the Cameron County area. Again, this was an unfunded mandate for us, that we're spending about $225,000 annually on jail diversion through our different programs, and we're adding staff in the Cameron County area. We're currently working with the sheriff and the sheriff's department and talking about the possibility of having some psychiatric, psychiatry service being provided in the jail system itself. Right now, we're looking at the possibility of two four-hour blocks per week, and we're working with them on that. We hope to have something to you very soon on that. We believe that will be increasing the efficiency and effectiveness of those services and save a lot of dollars as well through your formularies, not having deputies travel and things of that nature. We've added telemedicine services. Of course, we'll be finishing our, our building at Price and Old Dallas Road, which we'll be handing out some flyers for. Opening of that building, its scheduled completion is June, just a couple months away. We'll be adding a second psychiatrist in Harlingen on July the 3rd. We'll have a second in Brownsville on July 16th. That will make four psychiatrists that work for our agency in Cameron County. And if everything goes as well, I'll knock with it, we don't lose anybody, we'll have a full complement of docs, all of our doc positions, psychiatrist positions will be filled as of July 16th. We're very excited about having those two gentlemen come onboard. And our summer programs will begin this, this month. Some critical issues, as this group certainly knows, and many of our community partners knows, crisis services in transportation continues to be a big issue for us. There are some funding mechanisms being discussed at the state level. Department of State Health Services has requested $82 million for the state to impact crisis services, some of which would be used for transportation. It's currently at the Budget Committee right now, wrangling that out between the Senate and the House in regards to how much of that would be funded. So I'm hopeful that there'll be dollars coming here. If they do, we'll be meeting with groups like yourself, as well as law enforcement agencies, other stakeholders, in terms of what will make the biggest impact across our area on the crisis, and of course, the transportation issue. As I mentioned, our state hospital bed allocation, it's of concern for us, we have to stay very closely in tune with it, who we, who we authorize to go into the hospital. We are the front door for our local hospital beds. We tend to be very stingy, if you will, with those beds. When someone needs to go in the hospital, we authorize it. But if there's another alternative we can figure out, we try to figure something out. We have been at 99% of our allocation for the last two fiscal years. As our local population continues to grow, the math just, just works, the same number of people are going to be carrying percentage-wise, serious and persistent mental illness. So there's going to be that much more and more and more pressure on those state hospital beds. Rio Grande State Center remains with their 55 beds. Our state hospital beds statewide is not doing significant growth, so that will be something we'll continue to struggle with. And as, as I mentioned, our number served, we're currently funded by the state to serve 396 children, it's over 750 now. So a big struggle, but our, our staff are doing a great job at maintaining and providing those services. We continue to be-
I had a-
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me. I had a question. Do you, do you really have a problem filling your vacancies? I see here recruitment of clinical service providers.
We do.
Is that a problem for you?
We do. We've been extremely successful in a new program that we've implemented with recruitment of our psychiatrists. But it's, it's using funding streams and agencies that aren't available to everyone, like J-1 Visa, National Health Service docs that go into medically served areas, things of that nature. But there are typically, and usually, and again, if this happens, it will be the first time in probably two decades that we've been fully staffed on docs. But there are other, other clinical service provider areas, the licensed counselors, nurses, it's a big, big struggle. And when we add on not only the license, but that, we need bilingual people as well.
That's what I was going to stress, I bet that's the challenge.
Exactly.
Probably your biggest percentage are not bilingual and only speak Spanish, am I correct?
That's, well, that's correct. We have a very significant proportion of our, of our population that we serve is monolingual Spanish only. Our, the population that we serve reflects the community, and our patient's makeup is about 87% Hispanic. Our overall employee makeup actually over-represents that sum, about 88 or 89% Hispanic. And the, over two-thirds of our employees speak Spanish, are bilingual, Spanish and English. But you're right, it's, it's an ongoing concern for us.
Challenge.
It is, a challenge. And we are among the highest paying among all the community centers across the state for some of these positions, to make sure we're as competitive as we can be. But if there's only so many people that have those skills, those licenses, that ability to speak Spanish, it doesn't matter how much you pay someone who doesn't have it, they can't do it. Again, critical issues for us, we want to maintain local control, so bodies such as yourself and our Board of Directors, our local law enforcement and others can have a say in what happens, where our service needs are, and how any new dollars might be spent. And equity funding issues, there are, we have received, been fortunate to receive extra dollars on the mental retardation side for what's been referred to as equity. For a variety of reasons, there's a great disparity across the different 39 community centers in how they're funded, and how much funding they receive from the state. For whatever reason, Tropical and the Rio Grande Valley's always been at the bottom of that total pole in terms of how much money we get on a per capita basis. By comparison, last year, this is according to Department of State Health Services, the highest per capita funding at any area, at any catchment area across the state was about $22 per person. Last year's, ours, was $8.80 per person. So there had been a big push to try to get some equity in some of that. There was a rioter at the last legislative session that forced Department of State Health Services and Department Aging and Disability Services, the MR side, to address that issue. Because they began to address that, we began to get some more dollars. I'm very proud that we've pulled off and began serving, providing services to over 300 people that have been on our MR waiting list, people that have been on that waiting list for years. And I'm hopeful that that will continue. Those dollars are at risk right now. That equity rioter is existing on Article 11, which is currently being negotiated by the Budget Committee, made up of both the House and the Senate, in their negotiations of how those different things are going to be funded. It is unpopular in some parts of the state, there's not a fiscal note to it, but it reallocates dollars from some areas to other areas, meaning ours, that don't have as much funding. So you can understand that, that areas that struggle to provide services, taking away dollars from them is very painful. So it is a very hot item right now, but one that I'm still interested in, as we're able to provide more services here. So that's something that we're keeping very close in mind. And again, what we want to be of value to you is to provide information, again, your resource. As I say, please, if anything comes up, any constituents you have, call, call me at any time, I want to be a part of that solution. We continue working with our, our stakeholders and trying to expand our services and what we do, and we do have a very strong support from our local delegation in regards to our agency and what we try to do, and I'm very appreciative of that. I'm hopeful that they'll continue to make an impact for us locally. Are there any other questions or, or comments?
Any questions?
Terry, I'd like to thank you and your staff for being part of the mental health task force that the county has put together in order to try to attract additional psychiatrists into the county. Obviously, the issues that we're really focusing on would be attracting psychiatrists that have the ability to have their own office-
Absolutely.
And take the public, the general public, ones that have the ability to pay and ones that have their own insurance to pay with.
Absolutely.
That's where we, as a county, are extremely deficient, having one full-time, I think, and now one that's just opened an office a couple days a week, really puts a strain on the county in that, in that we should have about 12-
Exactly.
-private practicing psychiatrists in the county. So I do appreciate y'all's efforts and help-
It's our pleasure.
On that work.
It's an honor to be a part of that, and we thoroughly understand and want to help with that as well. It's certainly not an issue which is taking patients away from us. These are people that don't meet our eligibility criteria, and certainly, there's a huge need there. So it's a pleasure for us to be a part of it.
Thank you. Any other comment?
No, it's just nice to hear you say that you're fully staffed.
How, I, that's surprising.
You know, I know that a couple of years ago, it was a difficult situation for you, so-
Thank you.
That means better service for the folks out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Do I hear motion to acknowledge presentation?
Don't move.
Moved by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second by Commissioner Benavides? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item five, consideration adoption of resolution honoring Mr. Joe Raymond Tito Gomez on the occasion of his retirement from Cameron County. Do I hear motion by Commissioner Gatsa? Do I have a second by Commissioner Thamaio? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries, I think this will be presented next Tuesday? Okay. I will be out of town, so will you do the honors?
We'll wait.
All right, okay. Item six, consideration adoption of resolution supporting the restriction of drill, drill mining activity in the designated park areas of Federal Pete Benavides County Park, as protect us parks and wildlife requirements.
Judge, could I just add, if we can include a, a section there where we describe the property that it's only 60 acres? Because Brownie Road, it's originally 115 acres. So I don't want them to, for us to have this blanket resolution or restriction over the whole 115 acres. So we can be specific, and we can just add a whereas in there, in the resolution, where it just describes the 60 acres.
Okay.
That's fine.
Okay, do you want 60 or 115?
No, 60 acres.
You want 60.
That's what we applied for when we, when we got the grant for the Brownie Road Regional Park.
So does that mean that if they were to come in and want to do it in the rest of the, of the acreage?
Right, right.
We would allow them to do it?
We would allow it, because that's, we don't, we don't, when we got the grant, it wasn't for the 115, it was only for 60 acres.
Does that mean we're never going to apply for any additional monies to expand?
No, but what we, no, but what we do, can do is, when we apply for the, the second phase, we would have to adopt another resolution for that track, or whatever we apply for. And we're going to have to do that for, for example, the one for Loudellis, we're going to adopt a resolution identical to this.
Why don't we just, why don't we just table this?
Okay.
And fix it? And we've got some other corrections on here, bring it back next week?
Okay.
Do I have a motion to table? Move by Commissioner Benavides. Second by Commissioner Thamaio. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item seven, consideration approval of resolution authorizing the District Attorney's Office to file Violence Against Women Act continuation grant application with the Governor's Office Criminal Justice Division for Domestic Violence Unit.
Judge and Commissioners, we, we did have a minor modification to the grant budget. I tried to circulate that to you all today, but if you didn't get it, I'll just read it into the record. The, the total project cost went up by $1,591, and the local match went up by $556.77. And of course, the local match is coming from the DA's forfeiture fund.
Do I hear motion to approve that with that, with that change? Moved by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Thamaio. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Consent items, is there any item that the court wishes to take out and discuss separately for, and the travel items?
Judge, item number eight needs to be pulled out of consent. Item number 16 needs to be pulled out of consent. And item 23A needs to be tabled.
And on item 22, I had no backup.
That's on the, that's on the concession agreements.
Right. Is there, was there a backup somewhere on that email?
I saw-
I didn't get it today.
Yeah, I saw, like a-
They sent us, it was emailed to us.
Well, I'll tell you what, if you want, we can pull that one out if you want, and discuss it separately, and you can make copies during, is that all right?
Yep.
Let's go ahead and pull that one out, item 22, and then make copies of whatever you emailed for everybody on the court, somebody, you know, okay? Okay, we're going to pull out item eight, consideration authorization to issue individual permits allowing geophysical explorers contractor for Sanchez Oil and Gas. Item 16, having to do with consideration authorized to adjust funds for the previously selected county coastal impact assistance program. And item 22, consideration authorized to award subject to contract negotiations approval for operations of seven concession businesses at South Pottery. Those we're going to pull out and discuss separately. Item A of the travel, we will, we will table. So I hear, do I hear a motion on the consent items and travel items, except for those aforementioned ones that we're going to pull out and/or table?
Don't move.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Do I hear motion to go into executive session?
Judge, if I, if I may, I don't want to disappoint some children from Sullivan Elementary School. I told them that during public comment, may I go back to public comment right now?
Oh, absolutely.
That, there's some children at Sullivan Elementary School that invited me today, and they're, they've started a butterfly garden, they're elementary children, in room three, and they're very excited, they're, they're learning all kinds of math, all kinds of, of skills that they're developing, and they're selling stepping stones. So they said if anybody's interested in, in buying a stepping stone in honor of someone, they'll have the name printed on there, and so contact Sullivan Elementary School and ask for room three, and you will be given all the information. And I enjoyed being there, and they're darling children.
Thank you. Executive session item, item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issues with the international bridge system on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules of professional conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with this chapter pursuant to Government Code Section 551.0712. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 17 for the right-of-way of the West Rail project pursuant to Code Section 551.072. Item C, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Roel Gonzalez and Sonia Gonzalez versus Cameron County, Texas, and Jesus Villanueva individually and his official capacity, Civil Action Number 05-278, for discussion of status of case and settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. Confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel, excuse me, concerning Andrew Paul Smith versus Cameron County, Texas, and Omad Lucio, Sheriff of Cameron County, Texas, Civil Action Number B-05-302, for discussion of status of case and settlement pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. Lastly, item E, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning the balance due under the old contract for discussion and authority settled with Red River Service Corporation pursuant to Code Section 551.0711A. We'll be back. Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item A, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning management and purchase issues with international bridge system. Do I hear motion?
Move to table.
To table by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gatsa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item B, deliberation regarding real property concerning acquisition of parcel 17 for the right-of-way of the West Rail project. Do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
What's the motion?
To allow our folks to negotiate.
Confer with Texas law and negotiated price.
With Texas law and-
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Roel Gonzalez and Sonia Gonzalez versus Cameron County, and Jesus Villanueva, and it, and in his official capacity, Civil Action Number 05-278.
Move to acknowledge report.
Move by Commissioner Wood to acknowledge report of counsel.
Second.
Do I have a second by Commissioner Thamaio? Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item D, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning Andrew Paul Smith versus Cameron County and others. Do I hear a motion to acknowledge report of counsel and-
The report showed a summary judgment was issued in our behalf, or our favor.
Right, okay. Move by Commissioner Wood. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item E, confer with Commissioners Court Legal Counsel concerning the balance due under the old contract for discussion and authority settled with Red River Service Corporation. W, you want to go ahead and produce the dollars that we're exchanging in the checks?
Yes, the court, the motion should be to approve the mutual release and settlement agreement whereby Red River will pay to the county $23,653.10, and, I'm sorry, excuse me, where the county will pay to Red River that amount, and Red River will pay to the county $126,974.78. And in addition, please to authorize the release of those checks.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Don't move.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Please note the Commissioner Thamaio-
Notice, notice that extension, that, on E, please.
Yeah, please note the Commissioner Thamaio was not in the room during the discussions. Okay, back to the regular agenda. I've been asked to pull one more item out of the consent, I believe it was number 20, Commissioner?
Yes, number 20.
Item 20. Even though that was approved, we're going to discuss that again.
Mark, or-
I'm sorry?
Did, did Mark want to discuss that, or?
Well, when we get to it.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Item A, consideration authorization to issue individual permits allowing geophysical explorer as contractor for Sanchez Oil and Gas to enter upon property currently owned by Cameron County or held by Cameron County as trustee for the purpose of placing any necessary equipment on said property for the performing seismic testing. Pete? Okay, do I hear a motion to table the item?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Commissioner Benavides, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 16, consideration authorization to adjust the funds for the previously selected county coastal impact assistance program, tier one projects. Did you wanna address this one after a specific item, Commissioner?
Well, I visited with Javier Mendez, and he tells me that any changes to that budget would cause a delay, right?
Correct. Not just for us, but for the rest of the counties.
Yeah, so, is that?
Your motion to approve?
Yeah, I move that we approve it.
Second.
Uh, move by Commissioner Gatsa.
Okay, the only, the only thing I wanted to say.
Second by Commissioner Wood, discussion.
Yeah. Do we have to approve it for the three-year cycle, Javier?
Well, what is, is, um, they're, they're gonna spend that much money. The total amount is 384, for example, Bahia Grande, 384,234. They're gonna spend that much money over the three years. But next year, 2008, that's gonna be a separate funding cycle, so there's gonna be a different table for that. It's a little confusing.
Well, see, and that's where my confusion comes in, because the only thing we're gonna spend is a 2007 amount.
Correct, correct.
But with this budget, I just don't wanna make sure that we don't lose the other amounts that are encumbered of the 919,000.
What it is, Commissioner, that they're spending those, uh, that amount within a three-year period, 'cause they don't think they could spend the 384,000 in one year.
Okay.
So, they're, they're gonna break it down. But next year, uh, Cameron County's gonna get another 919,000.
Right.
And then we're gonna have to go and solicit proposals, and that's why we're gonna create this task force.
Right.
So, we can prioritize which projects we're gonna apply.
Okay, so we won't jeopardize this CEP amount by scheduling it to be spent over a three-year period?
No, sir.
Okay.
I move to approve. And we could always amend it next year.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And I've already seconded.
Okay, move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Uh, even though we've already approved item 20, we're gonna pull it out and discuss it separately. Consideration authorization to award subject to contract negotiations and approval by Commissioners Court the following bid RFP, RFQ for laboratory services in the infirmary.
On number 20, if you use all the scores of the committee, the high score is clinical path. If you remove the high and low, the high score is Lab Core. So, we need direction from the court.
Okay, come back again?
On number 20, if you use all the scores of the committee, the high score is clinical path. If you remove the high and low score, the high score is Lab Core of America.
Well, it appears to me that there's a recommendation by the evaluators to approve clinical pathology, and apparently they're a hard engine company, whereas these others are outside South Texas and so on.
Do I hear a motion to approve clinical pathology?
Second.
Move by Commissioner Wood, second by Commissioner Gatsa, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Well, you know what, we'd already approved it. So, we do it again, all right. Item 22, consideration authorization to award subject to contract negotiations as approved by Commissioners Court the following bid RFP, RFQ for operations of seven concession businesses at the parks.
Same situation again on location number six, Beach Rental. If you use all the committee's scores, the high score is Beach Services. If you remove the high and low score, the high score is Sunnys.
Which one's that one?
Location number six, Beach Rental.
It's, uh, two pages before the end.
Got it. What is your recommendation? What is the committee's recommendation?
Committee's recommendation, all five committee members would be Beach Services.
All right, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 26, budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules.
Judge?
I'm sorry, I wanted to ask a question. Um, are these bids where there's like, uh, three or four going to the same concessionaire? What happens in the case, let's say, for some reason, the business was to go under? And I, and this is just, what would happen? Would we come back and have to wait, what, four or five months before we rebid it? Or would we call in the next person in line that, uh, had the next to the highest bid?
I don't recall that happening before. We'd probably sit down with legal and then meet with the court and try and determine what the court would like us to do.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't, I didn't understand the question.
I didn't either.
What was the question?
There's, um, three or four of the bids were going to Beach Services. And my, my only question is, let's say something was to happen drastic, and they were to go under or whatever, would we have to wait another, what, four or five months to rebid again?
No, I, I think if they go under, they, at some point, if they go under, then they violate the terms of the lease agreement. So, at that point, we would solicit bids.
Again?
Yes. I don't think you give it back to the second one, I think you go back and do that. That's what I would think that you would do.
But it wouldn't take that long.
I wouldn't think so.
Well, when do we go out for these?
Pardon me?
When did we go out for these?
November, December?
Yes, no, early January.
Five or six months.
No, it wasn't, was it early January?
January, four months. Javier? However, we could probably arrange something for someone to temporarily operate it if it needed to be on some temporary basis.
Yeah, it was in January. And, and I think, uh, you know, the question Commissioner Benavides asks is, you know, they do default, um, and if, if there's one concessionaire, one company has taken over three or four or five, and they default, then we're out, um, all of the concessions, and we have to rebid all of them again.
Okay, but just, just so I'm clear, if there's a concessionaire that has four concessions out there, and they default on one, do they automatically lose the other three, or just on that one?
W, how would that work?
I mean, they're all individual, separate concession agreements, so I would assume that they only default on one.
Yep.
Right? Everyone stands alone, okay.
And that would apply even if a concessionaire only had one concession, and for some reason, they were not able to comply with their contract, and we'd still have to go out for bids for that one. But, and I would think that we could be able to make some type of arrangements for someone to temporarily operate it until we can get through the process of bidding, especially in the height of the season.
Well, if it happens, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Okay. I mean, it's just, I just wondered what would happen in a case like that.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Javier, I think you're up.
Javier, we are ready.
Yeah, yeah. Thanks, Javier.
Yes, we have a lot of Javier.
Uh, Judge and, excuse me, Judge and Commissioners, uh, there was various, uh, line item transfers uh, between, and within different departments, uh, transferring funds between the different items. They're all within, uh, their individual budgets, um... If you have any specific questions, ask them.
Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion to approve the budget amendments, line item transfers and/or salary schedules. Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 27, approval of minutes from March the 13th, 2007, and March the 20th, 2007. Uh, has the, have the court had the opportunity to read the minutes?
I have, I don't know if, if everybody got them.
Anybody over here?
I'm ready.
Okay, do I hear a motion by Commissioner Tamayo?
Yes.
Second by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 28, approval of claims. Do I hear, with, with the additions, do I hear a motion to approve the claims?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Wood, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Benavides, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries.
An abstention on warrant 00179908, and I've turned it into affidavits to the court.
Okay, please note Commissioner Gatsa's abstention on that warrant number. Item 29, discussion and possible action on temporary contract negotiation regarding the performance of autopsies for Cameron County. Anything new to report, Pete or David?
The only thing new to report is that we have a meeting scheduled for Thursday at 1:30, and I think David is back there. We, we just got that confirmed this afternoon, and we'll invite the other parties to the meeting and...
Okay, do I have a motion to table?
So moved.
Move by Commissioner Gatsa, second by Commissioner Tamayo, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 30, consideration and possible action regarding the creation of the Cameron County Coastal Impacts Task Force and appointment of county representatives. Pete?
Uh...
For Commissioner Gatsa.
I asked Pete to put this on the agenda last week. Commissioner Benavides and myself were at a meeting in South Padre Island in which the different entities were together, and I know that Joe Vega was there at the meeting also. I didn't know who he was representing, the town of Port Isabel or the county, but, uh, he heard, we all heard everything that went on. It became very apparent during the meeting that folks wanna work together in the Laguna Vista area in regards to some issues that exist that need to be dealt with in a more uniform way, in a more collaborative way, not only by the county and the town of South Padre, but, but all the communities that are affected there. As a result of the discussions, and as a result of the discussions that we had with some of the GLO individuals that were there at the meeting presenting, it became very apparent very quickly that, uh, we are behind the eight ball on this. Cameron County needs to develop an impact task force to deal with a more uniform way of addressing the beach erosion that we've had the pleasure of having an individual join us here weekly now, and thank you for being here. I thanked you at that meeting for having brought that to our attention at Commissioners Court. But, uh, I think the task force would be the first step that we need to take to start developing a plan. Uh, we talked about CEP monies a little while ago, we have $919,000, but that's only a small part of the budget that exists to deal with issues. And what we have to do is we have to hopefully be able to leverage significant funding from other sources, federal dollars, to be able to do comprehensive studies so that we can deal with some of the issues that we have, especially with the beach erosion issue that's occurring now. We don't need to compete between us and the town of South Padre for projects. We need to collaborate and work together so that we can hopefully do more at one time with more dollars being leveraged into us. So, this is only the first part of what I like to bring to the attention of the Commissioners Court. Uh, the next part is that we're gonna have to establish a commitment in a budgetary way to this task force. There's, there's, uh, after listening for two and a half hours, three hours that we were there, it's very apparent that we have a major threat to the industry that exists at South Padre Island. And we need to do everything we can to protect that industry and to protect the neighboring communities. And it's only through this type of action that we can get things done. It's, it's easy for the town of South Padre to go to Austin and put forth their request, but it's, it holds a whole lot more weight when the county, Port Isabel, South Padre, Laguna Vista, and Bayview all unify and get there. And the intent to put this on is pretty much replicating something that's occurring in Brazoria County. They've been able to do some things in a major way by forming a consortium between the different individuals that are playing. There's a, there's a page that follows the, uh, agenda item that has a purpose of the committee, and is something that, again, is after the Brazoria County, uh, purpose and goals for that committee. We can add, we can delete, we can do whatever we want, but it's very important that we do the things that are listed there, which identify and evaluate coastal impacts, evaluate methods and alternatives for remediation, promote uniform responsible management policies for the reduction of the coastal impacts that we have occurring, and most importantly, maximize the funding assistance to the region through projects, either state or federal. So, that's what I wanted to make sure and put forth before you. Uh, you know, this is just a fluid agenda, it's not something that, you know, that's all that we're gonna have as far as committee members, this is just the start.
How many, how many committee members would you like to have?
Well, first, you know, we have, on the proposal here, we have Cameron County, city of Port Isabel, town of Laguna Vista, town of Bayview, and town of South Padre for starters. Uh, we need a working committee, and then we would hope in a future date, after this working committee gets going, that we would bring back the advisory committee members, in which we could invite people like the port of Brownsville, the port of Semenito, PISD, you know, the Port Isabel, Semenito, Port Isabel, uh, you know, and others. There's a number of other folks that we've discussed coming into the committee and, and helping us with this, you know.
Well, I would recommend that, uh... I would recommend that maybe we start off with a committee of seven or nine. Uh, you start getting it too big, and it just, you know, it's hard to get people involved. Do you have any names that you'd like to recommend, or you wanna sit back, maybe, maybe?
I would, I would like to visit with each one of the individual locations.
Okay.
See who they would like to, like, 'cause we need a working committee, we don't need a blue collar committee.
That's correct.
First committee shown here would, I mean, if it were one from each of these, that would be five. Um, you know, a couple more would hurt, but, like you say, maybe in the future adding an advisory committee or adding to the committee Brownsville Navigation District, Port Isabel, Semenito Navigation District, Los Residencies, maybe, or Royal City.
Right.
Some others that are...
And, and we, we dealt with this communities that were there that night, that's why we put it this way. And, uh, but I, I'm amicable to, uh, you know, whoever we need to get to move this project forward, and to get the ball rolling on this, because there's, uh, you know, one of the comments that was made by the GLO that evening was that they would like to partner with Cameron County on some projects, and they would like to help us. And by that, usually that would mean that they are funds available that they access and we can't, so that we can do things. We don't have a comprehensive study right now to determine why, you know, we're having the erosion problems where we are, that we know that, uh, there's a major problem at, you know. And it's only through developing a study through partners like the Army Corps of Engineers, partners like the GLO, partners like the Coastal Management Office.
Well, that's what I was gonna mention, Commissioner Gatsa, I think definitely, and, and, and I applaud the committee for getting this started, but this is definitely a, a baby step. And, and you're gonna build on it, but definitely we need to bring in all, uh, as partners, all other agencies that, that can not only, uh, help you move, advocate for you, but also find funding. And so, definitely I recommend to the committee. Um, and, and I would like to be emailed, uh, whenever this committee meets, so that, uh, you know, some of us can go as observers. I, I think, I agree with a, with a judge, that I think seven on the committee is plenty.
Yes, uh, one of the first things that we need to do is also, uh, we need to work on a memorandum of agreement and, of understanding, and, uh, we need to bring it before each entity, and so we could have an agreement on the, basically on the bylaws, on how this committee's gonna work. And I, I believe, uh, we would like for, I guess, for the county to appoint somebody to that committee.
I would just impact, I, I'm assuming, from what I understand, on beach erosion, not just in our area, but apparently all around the world, there's beach erosion problems. And it may be bigger than all of us, but we need to certainly address ours. Uh, South Padre Island does fall in precinct one, and I would suggest perhaps Commissioner Benavides serving on the committee.
Well, I, I would, if we're gonna have five or seven, uh, I think that if we're gonna have five right now, because Commissioner Gatsa's taken the lead on this, I would suggest that, that, uh, that he be on the committee. And if we're gonna do to seven, we can appoint, uh, Commissioner Benavides as well. I would also include the Port Isabel School District.
Yes.
As, as one of the committee members. And if we do that, if we have two from Cameron County, one from the city of PI, the town of Laguna Vista, town of Bayview, town of South Padre, and PI, I believe it gives you your seven members.
Okay, and Javier and I, we could help expedite, you know, the committee and and move it, you know, move it in the right direction, but y'all will be representing.
Yeah, do you want, do you wanna get your, your, uh, you know, city of Port Isabel also maybe to appoint somebody? And it, and I think you do it where you have a member and a designee in case Commissioner Gatsa can't make it, you know, that, that somebody else can go, but, but really, I'd like to see Commissioner Gatsa spearhead it and, and be the chair, if, if y'all have any problems with that.
Okay.
Judge, we met about, uh, 30 days ago with General Land Office, and, um, when this, this subject came up again at one of our meetings, and, um, there were several members there, and they were interested in, in participating in this. And one, one of the, um, for example, the port of Brownsville, Donna, she wanted to be on the committee. Um, there was members from Port Isabel, of course, um, there was, uh, of course, there was nobody there from the Port Isabel Semenito Navigation District, Bob was out of town, but he did lend us his room. Um, and there were some other members that were, that were really interested in, in partnering up with us. And, um, Jim from my office prepared a memorandum of understanding, and he sent it over to Pete so he can review and kind of massage, and maybe we can use that as a template. And I think he also sent it over to South Padre for them to review, because those were going to be kind of the two lead entities. It was going to be Cameron County and South Padre. So we're kind of pushing, pushing towards that, and I'm glad.
Are you suggesting that at this point, we include the port of Brownsville and?
The San Benito.
Well, then why don't we do this? I mean, because we want to, we don't want to get a group that's just too huge, where it just makes it unmanageable. So if we do seven, then we can have Commissioner Garza, you know, be on the committee, Commissioner Benavides can be the alternate. Of course, they can attend meetings if you like, that's not a problem, okay? You can attend all the meetings that you want, unless you want to increase it to nine, you know, and then, I mean, it doesn't matter.
I would really like to sit in on this committee. I know I'm new, and I've been attending some of the meetings in South Padre Island and getting acquainted with the problems at hand, and if y'all don't mind, I really would like to sit on it.
Well, let's go ahead and make it bigger, take it to nine.
I don't, you know, I mean, to me, my issue was getting the committee together. After sitting there and listening, I called Pete Benavides, I mean Pete Benavides, I called Pete to pull with her, and I says, "We have to put this together. We need to do this because it's too big of an issue for this county to not work as a group to remedy the situation." And that's why, you know, put me on, take me off.
I think I would like to see both Commissioner Garza and Commissioner Benavides.
Let me, let me recommend the following. Let me, let me recommend, at least from Cameron County, that we ask Commissioner Garza to chair the committee, and then have Commissioner Benavides be part of the committee, somebody from the city of Port Isabel, somebody from the town of Laguna Vista, town of Bayview, town of South Padre Island, Port Isabel Independent School District, port of Brownsville, and the, and the Port Isabel San Benito Navigation District. I think that gives you your nine members.
Judge, just let you know that tomorrow, it's on the agenda for the city of, for the town of South Padre Island, they're going to appoint somebody to represent.
And make sure, Joe, that when, and when you, when you convey this message to everybody else, make sure that whomever their appointment's going to be, that they also allow for a designee in case that person can't make it. So that would be my recommendation. If any further, do I hear a motion to approve?
I do, but I would like to add that please emphasize that this isn't just a committee that, that will be meeting and not getting anything done. I mean, make sure they realize it's going to be a working committee, whomever they appoint, and I will make that motion, Judge.
Yeah, don't put anybody who just wants to pad their resume, okay?
Yeah.
All right, that was moved by Commissioner Thamaya. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wood, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Thank you, Commissioners, for willing to serve on that, on that committee. Item 31, consideration, possible action regarding the county's legislative agenda for the AD of the Texas Legislative Session. David?
Judge, Commissioners, we passed out a spreadsheet, like we did last week, on the bills that we've been following, and just outlining some of the action that has occurred in the last week. Just going to outline a few of these bills real quick. HB 1100 was passed and engrossed, passed last Friday. That's the Olmito subdivision legislation. HB 3437 also passed, it's the vehicle registration fees for funding to the RMA's.
Excuse me, David, how did that one, how did it go for Cameron County on that one?
We got the language that we needed in, which was the population, bringing down the population threshold.
To 350.
Yes.
Okay, but that was one of, I think we had two or three other issues. One, the up to the $10.
Up to $10 was also included as well.
Okay, and at the discretion of who are the voters, or commit?
That was not included, the decision of the voters was not included.
Okay, so then it's, it's up to the Commissioners' Court?
Correct.
Did they, did they do a super majority, or just a simple majority?
Just a, just a simple majority. And these will be projects that are also agreed to by the NPOs in the county. The other bill was the Health District Bill, Senate Bill 1549, also passed, and that doesn't have any language on the one county health district currently. I think Senator Hinoz is trying to amend that. He does change the language where the Commissioners' Court is also involved in making, in the makeup of the Health Service District. House Bill 573, the Colonial Lighting Bill, was sent to the local consent calendar, and House Bill 3747, our rail relocation bill, was sent to the general calendar. And then, one of the bills we mentioned last week regarding county courts and eliminating them basically, is SB 1204, and that was placed on the intent calendar. I did send the court an email earlier, yesterday, had some conversations with our senators and our legislators, and they're telling me that it's a bill that's been introduced numerous times in the past, it hasn't gone anywhere. They feel that it'll, you know, die again, but they're going to, you know, track it and make sure that, that they oppose it. That's all I had for now. If there is any questions or any issues that you all want us to address.
Do I hear a motion to acknowledge Mr. Garza's report? Moved by Commissioner Thamaya, do I have a second? By Commissioner Garza, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Item 32, discussion, possible action regarding the county's federal legislative agenda?
No, there's no, nothing to report at this.
Do I hear a motion to table?
Thank you.
Moved by Commissioner Garza, do I have a second?
Second.
By Commissioner Thamaya, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. We have a supplemental agenda. Consideration, possible action to relocate the mailroom at the administrative building to the basement of the Dancy Building, and to equip and staff the mailroom at the Orera de la Gasa and Joe Rivera San Benito Courthouse Annex Building, formerly known as the Levi's Building?
The third floor and the fourth floor are about two undergoing renovations. On the third floor, the auditor's office was formerly housed, still resides the mailroom serving the administrative and judicial building. It's not going to function in the middle of the DA's office, and it probably won't function during construction. I need to relocate it, and this, this item has two different issues involved, but we, there is an office down next to the basement office of the maintenance department, I think it's B, next to BO 50, which we can set the mailroom operations and then use my staff member to transport mail between the two buildings. It causes a problem when the person's out sick or on vacation, and I have to reallocate other resources. But that's my, my current temporary situation and solution to that, is to pick up mail at locations and to deliver it, and to use mail, I mean, to provide mail services out of this basement floor. The, I've been working with Tony Segari and Joe Rivera, trying to determine other locations that may fit better for the long-term solution. Another solution may be to use a warehouse location at the Zarate Warehouse, just up next to this, next to this building, across from the Pacheco, convert one of those rooms into a mail distribution center, so that through our IT services, we may be able to send electronic mail, have Leo Pampa print it for mass mailing, deliver it to a mass postage affixing machine, and to have mail services out of that area. It still requires, now that we're spread out between the two buildings, and perhaps three, to move a person between buildings and to actually move mail. In the past, the mail, the US Post Office would deliver at one location, and everybody come get their mail or deliver off their mail. And so that situation's no longer going to be feasible. The other issue that's brought up is that the San Benito Courthouse Annex, the building formerly known as Levi's Building, is going to have 156 people, and they're in 12 different departments. There is a mailroom designated on the schematics. There has been some interest presented to me about creating a centralized mail operation there. And so what I wanted to do is bring this idea before the court and look for your direction.
What are we going to do? I mean, if I understand you correctly, if the mailroom is relocated to this building, then the mail staff will take mail over to the administrative and judicial building and to one point, and then people will come pick it up like they normally do today? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, in the administrative building, we'll have two main customers, the tax office and the county clerk's office. In the judicial building, there are a number of more departments. What I'm going to look and work with your maintenance staff is to see if we can relocate those PO boxes, so that, somewhere in the judicial area, and just fill those PO boxes that we have developed, I mean, that we have there on the third floor, and relocate them somewhere in the judicial area, so that we'll just populate those mailboxes. We're going to have to work on a central drop-off procedure for mail, or they're going to have to bring it over. If it's critical for them, for it to get a postage affixed that day, then they better bring it over. You know, district clerk, county clerk, if they need turn sensitive, then their employees should steward the process. If they just drop it off in a box, then we'll pick it up, affix the postage, and send, take it out to the mail department, you know, for postage. And that's what we're going to have to do. I have one person designated to this particular operation, and when that person's out sick or on vacation, I have to cover with a file clerk or a payroll person, or receptionist. So that's, that's my issue.
Mark, on the, on the agenda request, none of the, none of the information was filled out in terms of budget and how much it's going to cost, other than what you have up here, so.
Right. The staff person, I would approach during the budgetary process.
I'm sorry?
I'm not really sure, if we're going to add a staff person for the San Benito location, then that would have to be done through the budgetary process.
The, when you talk about the new mail system, $1,424, is that in new money, or is that going to replace the $2,00940 that we're spending annually?
That would replace it. The health department has a small machine right now that just meets their needs.
All right, so you're talking about adding about another $15,000.
You're correct.
Right, to that, or net, well, you're going to eliminate the $2,0940, so you're going to net about $13,000.
In reality, I'd like to work with all the departments in the San Benito Harbor and area to see how they conduct their postage.
Well, what is, what does the Department of Transportation do here in Brownsville now with their mail?
Could you answer that question?
Do they have a system or machine, or?
No, we, we bring it over to the mailroom on the third floor, and the probably three largest divisions in the department, engineering, which covers building permits and engineering, and right away, the bridge system, and then public works. But they each have a runner that comes to the administrative building and delivers mail and picks up the mail.
Mark, do you want to, do you want to implement this like when?
Well, when you start construction for the third and fourth floor, we're going to have to move that. So we're going to have to have temporary facilities here where our mail machine needs to reside until we find a permanent solution and location. I've been working with the representative from the post office, who's out of San Antonio, to help us in an analysis of how we can better move our mail. That's, that's my solution at this stage, is to work with the departments and better understand their flow of mail. But in San Benito, it seems to be a piece of each department's resources that goes to the post office and either has their own mail machine, or buys their postage independently. And so this is a, an issue in which when we bring all the departments together, you may not be able to put your finger on some savings of time and money, but one person managing that versus having four or five people run to the post office.
Can you put together a little, a little budget for us, maybe for the next couple of meetings, as to, as to what you believe this is going to cost, not only towards the end of this fiscal year, but put together your annual budget for it as well? I think you need to include a, a person and equipment, whatever it is, tell us what it is that you think you need. We can always tailor it back, but tell us what you think you need, your best-case scenario.
Well, we're looking at, for me to do that, I want to know what type of services the Commissioners' Court's expecting for the San Benito location, and based on that representation, I can form a budget.
Okay, why don't, why don't you get with Pete and figure out a timeframe when all that's going to happen?
But in the meantime, I need to locate the office that's on the third floor of the administrative building to this basement, or to a.
You know, this actually has a problem with it, I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with that, but I would, let me use an example for clarification, I guess, of how I understand it might work if we relocate over here, because I really don't know how it would work now, where it's at. Let's use the Law Library. From time to time, they get boxes of books that are pretty heavy, and currently, are those, when they come in to the mailroom, are they then, does someone deliver them down to the Law Library?
Usually, we call the Law Library to pick them up. Books are usually shipped by UPS or a common carrier, rarely by the mail, but they are delivered to the mailroom just as a point of delivery lots of times.
Well, then I really don't care.
And if we can deliver it, we do.
And I guess I don't care, you know, who brings them to the mailroom. If they go to the mailroom, how do they get from there to the, to the Law Library? And if it's over here, how are they going to get from here to the Law Library?
Right.
You're, you're talking about in the Law Library, and since it's two female employees.
Well, my mailroom clerk is currently female.
I understand that, too. But we're hauling books and stuff, I don't know, do they oftentimes get help from the maintenance department or something to carry them around?
Well, the maintenance department does help from time to time, or if I have an employee that I can spare at the moment to assist, my file clerk. If there is a bulk delivery, then we all try to pitch in. Or if the department has resources, like the county clerk or district clerk, to send their particular file clerk over, then we ask them to come pick it up.
Anything further? So then they're going to be trucking the books from here over there now, I guess?
Yeah, it, it, book deliveries are fairly rare, so we handle them on a case-by-case basis.
Well, unless, unless, unless somebody has another option as to what he can do, I mean.
Well, the only other real location that was, and I've worked with the county clerk and tax assessor collectors, we, we needed a wall to put these boxes on, and there's not very many walls that we can access from the backside. The veterans, the area that used to be the veterans was the best location for the first floor, that prevented the mail carrier from having to go up several floors. That was the best, but.
Mark, the, using the basement, are you, what, what area are you talking about utilizing?
It's next to the maintenance department.
And what's there now?
Nothing.
I mean, is it?
Actually, my, my new mail machine is there.
Is it an empty room, basically?
Yes, it is.
Is that the room that the Cameron County Historical Association was looking at using at one time? Do I know, I mean, do we know?
I, I don't know what the designation was. In speaking to the past county administrator for the county judge's office, that was where they wanted to store some of their files.
How large is the room?
Probably 20 by 12.
Now, is this a temporary fix, or are you planning on being there on a, on a permanent basis?
Well, my preference would be at the warehouse, and to have that dressed up and remodeled and repaved and cleaned, and have all the scrap metal removed, and so that departments either could drive through or, or walk through, per se. That would be my preference.
But, but you're talking about long range?
Yeah, that'd be long range.
Okay, why don't we, I guess.
But short range, I think this could last a year.
Okay, unless someone has some opposition, the other one down the street, the Sadaq de Warehouse, why don't we just go ahead and, and use the basement, and then work with Barcelino and with Pete to see what it's going to take to refurbish, or fix, or remodel, whatever, the Sadaq de Warehouse, to have it more of a permanent, permanent thing? And come up with a budget of what you think it's going to cost, so we can factor that in.
Because I think a potential drive-through arrangement would save a lot in time and effort. I know that the tax office and the county clerk still pick up their mail, some of their mail at the PO box on Les Ebonnes, I think that's the street. And they have to send two people, one to drive and one to hop out and get the mail, because there is very limited parking. If we could work with the post office and setting up a substation of PO boxes, then it'd be easier for the county employees to go there rather than.
Why can't we get that mail, I guess, routed to the, let's, let's assume for a moment that we remodeled the, the Sadaq de Warehouse, okay? Why can't we eliminate those PO boxes and just have it all come there?
That's what I want to look into.
Okay, can, well, can you do that?
Yes.
All right, is that all right, y'all? Okay?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's look towards having a one-stop shop, so to speak, okay?
There.
So for now, you move into the basement, see Alan. Take care of him.
Thank you very much.
And you will have a plan for the Levi building, because we're talking about moving in. Yeah, okay, have a plan for that, and have, and have some, some budget numbers for us.
I'll identify what we're spending and how we're performing for. I'll identify what we're spending and how we're performing for each department that's getting ready to locate there.
Okay. All right. So do I have a motion to, uh, acknowledge Mark's presentation and authorize him or give him permission to relocate the mailroom to the, to the basement of the Dancy Building?
No, move.
Moved by Commissioner Tamayo. Second by Commissioner Benavides. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item carries. Um, I think that's it. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
No, move.
Moved by Commissioner Benavides. Second by Commissioner Garcia. All in favor, signify by saying aye.